It is August 23rd, 2023. And the first item on our agenda is an ordinance 2023-29, Lake Lemon Marina Rezone. And we have Mr. Drew Myers from the Planning Department here with us. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. So I've shared my screen here. This is the staff report from the Plan Commission meeting that was held on June 20th, 2023. And the Plan Commission at that hearing voted eight to zero for this petition with a positive recommendation to the county commissioners. There was one condition of approval, and that was the petitioner contract an Indiana licensed engineer to prove site distance can be met and approved by the Monroe County Highway Department, and that this information would be provided before this hearing. So I'll get into more details about that condition of approval. I wanted to go ahead and state that information. I will be drawing attention to the fact that the 90 days that this ordinance must be heard for final approval would be September 13th. So 90 days from the original approval from the Plan Commission on June 20th would be September 18th, but the closest meeting of the commissioners would be September 13th. So just to keep that in mind. Okay. So this is located at 9554 East North Shore Drive. It is a rezone request for the Lake Lemon Marina that is located at this address. The request is from limited business to limited business with the request to remove a prior rezone condition of approval for a shared driveway. So they're not changing the zoning district. They are just requesting that a prior condition of approval made to this rezone that came about in 2007 be removed so that they do not have to follow the condition of approval, which is a shared driveway. So the petition site is totaling 3.41 acres, located in Benton Township, Benton North Township, excuse me. The petitioner is proposing to amend the zoning map, limited business to limited business, with that removal of the prior condition of approval from ordinance 2007-48. And in Section 2 of that ordinance, the highlighted portion here is the condition of approval that we're talking about. It states access to proposed lots be provided by an ingress egress easement at the existing petition site entrance or via an easement from another existing driveway cut. No new driveway cuts shall be allowed onto East North Shore Drive. So if the rezone request is approved by the county commissioners, the condition of approval for a shared driveway will be removed from the properties originally involved in said rezone. Following approval of the rezone request, petitioner intends to apply for a major subdivision, preliminary plat amendment with a sidewalk waiver as well as, among other things. And that is also to remove the mention of that shared driveway requirement on the preliminary plat as well. It's staff's understanding that the condition to have a shared driveway is both located in the rezone and the subdivision final guiding documents. So that's why we would have to do both processes to officially remove the requirement for this site. So a bit of background for this property. In May of 2005, a rezone was approved for 1.37 acres of a 7.53 acre parcel to limited, excuse me, state residential. The original 7.53 acre parcel was a Lake Lemon Marina property, which was zoned limited business. So what the process they did back in those days was a little bit different than how we do it today in that they would rezone the property before subdividing it. So they would rezone portions of a lot and then follow up with a subdivision. So that's what happened in 2005. Portions of the original Lake Lemon Marina property was rezoned. And then later on, in that same year, in May 2005, a subdivision was approved, creating two lots that were zoned, state residential, and then the remaining acreage stayed with Marina that was zoned limited business. In May of 2006, the Monroe County Plan Commission approved a three lot major subdivision, creating two new lots and the remaining 5.53 acre lot from Marina business use. And finally, or excuse me, in December of 2007, a rezone, the one of interest in this case, was approved for the 5.53 acre lot. Two acres of that 5.53 acres were zoned from limited business to state residential, and now the remaining 3.53 acres retained the limited business zoning for the Marina. In March 2008, the Plan Commission approved three lot preliminary plat amendment to officially create two one acre lots now zoned state residential and left the remaining 3.41 acres lot for the Marina. Sometime in May of 2008, commercial site plan for Marina business was approved by the county planning staff. To date, staff is unsure whether a final land use certificate was issued for this site plan. There is a bond on file for paving Marina site, which is also the impetus for part of these filings. Petitioner would prefer not to pave and say get a release from bond funds. That process will be separate from this rezone discussion here, but it is something that would be coming down the pipeline. In November 2016, two driveway permits were issued by the Highway Department and then shortly after revoked. And that was for lots three and four of the North Shore Amendment One Final Plat. So these are two lots that were created or subdivided off of the Marina property that are zoned state residential, but they were incorporated in that original 2007 ordinance that required a shared driveway be shared amongst all of them in this area. In January 2019, a second final plat amendment was approved for the two one acre lots, as I stated, and that was to adjust the previously dedicated right of way. The North Shore Amendment Two Final Plat was reported in March 20th, 2019. This plat document more clearly identifies the shared driveway requirement that was initially required as part of the 2007 rezone, stating that the private drives to be relocated to Marina entrance per Monroe County Public Works Department, also known as the Highway So here we have the location map. This is the Lake Lemon Marina in red. Here we have the Lake Lemon Marina, its current zoning, limited business, as you'll note, and then the ER zones around it. These are those parcels that were subdivided off through those rezone petitions and then subsequent subdivision petitions that I talked about in the background. Here we have the site conditions and infrastructure. So as I stated, the Lake Lemon Marina currently operates on the site. It was owned by Shell Group LLC, but then Werner Group LLC purchased the company. So now Werner Group is the operator and the applicant to this petition. Mr. Stephen Werner Jr. has been in conversation with Planning Department and the Plan Commission hearings. He's the primary representative for the company and will have his testimony ready at the formal session. So just some other maps here. This is the Lake Lemon Marina with the DNR best available flood plot, flood plain mapping And here we have some site photos. This is the entrance area. This is the current driveway to Marina, looking north to a adjacent property to the north. As you'll note, in this top picture, there's another driveway cut that goes off to the east to service the properties, the two lots in that direction. Here is a photo of the existing driveway cut to Lake Lemon Marina. And in the background there, you can see the driveway cut that was not supposed to be there according to the condition of approval of the 2007 rezone. Technically, this driveway is supposed to attach to this driveway at the Marina entrance as the shared driveway design that was required under the condition of approval. So more pictures here. This road is, you see in the background, that is East North Shore Drive. This is looking southeast from the driveway cut on East North Shore. This is facing northwest on East North Shore. The driveway cut you see in the foreground is to the Marina. And then you can see that driveway cut in the background, that is to the two lots, lots three and four. This driveway was supposed to be shared with the Marina under the condition of approval. Just more pictures here to give you an idea of where we're at and what we're looking at. This is now facing southeast. You can see the Marina's driveway cut in the background. Just more pictures here. We have some comments from the Highway Department and Stormwater that was discussed at length during the Plan Commission meeting. You can come back to those if you have any questions. The conference of plan has it designated as rural residential. Keep scrolling through here. Findings of fact is located in the packet. We do have some letters from the petitioner talking about their acquiring of the property from Shell Group, and then a lot of their explanation as to why they don't want to share the driveway with the two lots to the west, and information regarding that in here. This is all in the packet. And I will have a detailed PowerPoint presentation for the formal session that will cover a lot of this information as well. I'm going to keep scrolling through this area to get to some of our exhibits. Here's an as-built survey, zoomed in a little. As you can see, the existing driveway. This whole area that you see in the orange dotted line polygon, that is all an ingress egress easement that services both lots three and four up here to the north and west, the Marina, as well as the two lots to the east. So the shared driveway was supposed to come off of the driveway cut off of the Marina and go northwest direction instead of creating a new cut onto East North Shore Drive. I included the original ordinance, 2007-48, in this packet. There's also in here the meeting minutes where this reason was discussed by the Plan Commission. So September 25th, 2007, there's some good discussion about the reasons why they requested the shared driveway in here. I highlighted those portions, although the highlighting seems to not translated well in the PDF. But I included that information here. The Plan Commission was wanting a lot of detail and history about this petition. I also included additional meeting minutes from another meeting where the Plan Commission talked about this property doing a plat amendment. So, you know, as in 2007, they did the rezone, and then they followed up with those subdivisions. So this is some more discussion about still requiring that driveway condition of approval for the shared driveway. And I highlighted some topics of interest in those meeting minutes as well. Okay. So this exhibit is the driveway permits that were issued in 2016 by the Highway Department that were soon after revoked because they realized that they were issued in error because of the condition of approval for the shared driveways. Included those. And then I have a couple exhibits of the subdivision plots as well. We can go through these. This one, you can have a zoomed in version. No, I do not. So I'm going to zoom in on this one a little bit. This is the most recent plat amendment, I believe. This is plat amendment one. So again, this is that ingress egress easement you see here. And then lots three and four here, they currently have a driveway cut that comes about right where my cursor is, and they share a driveway that comes this direction, north, northwest, where originally it should have with the Marina shared a driveway cut that services all of these lots in the subdivision. Okay. So I'm going to just keep scrolling through some of these exhibits. This is the amendment two. So this is the most up-to-date version, at least pertaining to lots three and four. There is some language here on the plat that talks about, or directly calls attention to that requirement from the original 2007 ordinance. If I can scroll to it. Bear with me here. Right here, private drive to be relocated to Marina entrance per Monroe County Public Okay. So here we have the Highway Department's most recent inspection reports where they denied driveway permits for the lots three and four. You may have some familiarity with this case, at least to a degree, because the petitioner appealed these denials of the Highway Department to the Board of Commissioners. And I believe that was in earlier this year, before the Plan Commission meeting in June. I'd have to find the exact date. But the hearing was held for the appeal. The representative did not attend the appeal. I believe Commissioner Githens was present and reviewed materials and voted to deny the appeal, to uphold the Highway Department's determination. So that did kind of cause a little bit of confusion about where we stand in the process, given that it was, an appeal was made and a decision was made, but the Plan Commission still hadn't provided their recommendation yet to the Board of Commissioners officially for the rezone. So we had to kind of work through that a little bit at the Plan Commission level. In the discussions with Plan Commission, there was a lot of talk about the safety aspect, you know, considering the existing driveway. There's been for lots three and four and compared to the existing driveway for the Marina. You know, there was some discussion on which is safer? Would a shared driveway be safer? Would just keeping the existing driveway cut be safer, especially if site distance can be met? So there was a lot of discussion about that, as well as traffic, traffic crash summaries along East North Shore Drive. So that's what Exhibit 11 is about, about crash summary data from January 2020 to September 2022. So if you have any questions about that data and traffic counts and traffic crash data, come back to it. We do have some letters of support from the property owners nearby, so lots three and four. The Gravelys own, I believe it was, I think it's lot four. They are utilizing the existing driveway cut and actually provided or spent money to pave it. So they've had an interest in not having to remove the cut and having to share it with the Marina. I'm sure that they will come and speak once the formal session gets going and public comment is provided. We do have, let's see here, letters of support from the Hammers, which own property to the east, in the same subdivision area. They also don't want to see more traffic essentially come through that Marina cut that's already fairly trafficked for Marina's use, as well as their own personal use for their residences to the east. We also have a letter of support from the Wiseman's, and they own the other lot, I think it's lot three, to the west, that is currently using that existing driveway cut on East North Shore. That should not have been permitted. And then Exhibit Three is the slideshow that the petitioner provided in the early stages of the Plan Commission hearings, and there's some information in there as well about their stance and their rationale to not having to establish a shared driveway. So I think that covers about it. I think I'm going to, oh, I will go to the top here. The petitioner, the reason why it's taken so long for us to have this meeting since the original Plan Commission hearing was on June 20th, was to provide the petitioner time to contract a surveyor to assist with evaluating site distance requirements. So basically, there was a lot of discussion about whether or not site distance can be met from the existing driveway cut on East North Shore for lot three and four, the one that shouldn't have happened. And they provided this analysis from a licensed engineer or surveyor that can certify that site distance looking northwest up to East North Shore Drive can be achieved. They've removed some vegetation in this area with the permission of the property owners to the north. So this is what that document looks like. So it satisfies the condition of approval from the Plan Commission's initial positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So now I can take any questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Mr. Thomas, you've heard this before.
I've heard this many times. I just want us to be very aware of the 90-day expiration on hearing this, so I just want to make sure that we hear this in a timely manner with a week or two to spare, which I think sounds like we need to hear it soon. But I will ask Drew for his advice on that. Thank you.
When I was looking through some of this, a lot of the print stuff, in terms of the copy that I'm able to access, is very blurred. I mean, so blurred that I can't even read parts of it. And so I would like to be able to read this. So if it could be made sharper somehow, I would really, really appreciate that.
It's in the minutes portion, right, from 2007?
This, I'm looking at the, no, it's even other things that came through. I mean, this is, some of this is from, from, okay. Some of it's just very blurred.
Yeah.
Some of it's great, some of it's not.
Okay.
So.
Yes. So in order to, you know, the packet's fairly large.
Yeah.
And when I had to send it to be included into the agenda, I had to reduce its size. So I might, I'll look into finding a way to not having to reduce the size and retain a lot of its resolution and get that over to you.
I'd appreciate that, yeah. I am concerned too, you said that vegetation was, was removed, but to improve sightlines, but vegetation can be put back at any time. Grows back, yeah. And I also would like to know if the non-approved driveway meets standards for a basic highway driveway in terms of the width, the sightlines. I understand they had a work done on the sightline, but there's other requirements that go along with this. So can you, do you know about that?
So with regard to the existing driveway and meeting highway standards, I would have to defer that to the Highway Department. They've performed several inspections of the area, so I will touch base with them to see if they know if the driveway's specifications at least meet the requirements. It was just, I believe most of the issue was that the driveway shouldn't have been permitted in the first place, given the condition. And sometimes those conditions, you know, they're kind of hard to keep track of. But I will reach out to the Highway Department to make sure about the specifications, our meeting code.
I appreciate that. I think too that one of the things I, and I did drive out there a few months ago. People pull in and out of that area with trailers on the back, and so it does create, I think, a bit of a traffic hazard through that area. But at this point, when I look at the schedule, we could hear this August 30th, September 6th, or September the 13th. What is the pleasure of my colleagues?
It doesn't matter.
Well, why don't we hear it on August the 30th then, so that if there's, if we need to continue it for other reasons, then we'll still be able to fit it within that 90-day time period.
Okay. That works for staff.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Myers. We'll see you next week then.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe, well, we have Mr. LaRue with us. Do you have something that you want for the work session?
No, I was, I was just listening, trying to pay attention and see what's happening.
Oh, okay. Well, you know more than I do at this point. So then also we have Ms. Turner King with a request related to the Blue Ribbon Committee. Where did I put that?
Good morning, Commissioners. So I have a printout that I'm going to hand you. And what I'm providing is a copy of the resolution that established the Climate Resilience Blue Ribbon Commission that was enacted on July 5th by the Board of Commissioners. And within that resolution, it defines that the Blue Ribbon Commission will consist of nine members. However, the resolution itself does not have any other membership qualifications. Thus, the uniform provisions for boards of commissions codified in Chapter 216 of the Monroe County Code would govern. And that states that any member of an advisory board shall be a Monroe County resident. In regards to the Blue Ribbon Commission, although we recognize it's important that members be Monroe County residents, it would, there's the idea that it would also be important to embrace individuals who have specialized knowledge on either climate change issues or institutionalized county knowledge that would be particularly important on this type of commission. So I'm proposing an amendment to the Blue Ribbon Commission resolution that would allow for such. And if you're looking at the paper that I provided, in essence, it adds a sentence in red, and I don't have it in front of me, that would, so it adds a sentence to Section 2 that would read, "Members will either be residents of Monroe County and/or have expertise in areas of climate change and/or knowledge in developing an emergency mitigation plan, preparedness, and response actions for the county using available county resources and climate data." And I'm proposing that for consideration.
So do we, do we have, what is the resolution number originally on that? Do we have that?
If I may.
Because this is an amendment to that resolution, that's why I was asking.
So that we could vote on it.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay. Let's let her get the resolution number, if that's okay, too.
Sorry, I'm scrolling through the agenda from July 5th. The resolution when passed was Resolution 2023-21, so this would be an amendment to that.
Okay. So do I have a motion, and then we'll have discussion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend Resolution 2023-21 as indicated.
Second.
And now, question?
Yes. I was wondering if it might be a good idea to limit the number of out-of-county residents who can serve on this committee. I'm not sure it would be a good idea. I'm not sure it would be a good idea if we ended up with a committee of entirely out-of-county residents.
And I think that would be totally within your purview, and I'm happy to add language to this resolution doing such.
Ms. Purdy.
Thank you. I just want to point out that any member has to be able to attend 50% of the meetings in person, so living outside of the county will restrict those who actually can participate. And they can only attend two meetings electronically in a row. So that may also serve as a limit, if you will.
And I would just point out that all the members of the commissions are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, so you really have that control whether you place it there or not.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
So is there a desire to limit the number of people that live outside?
I, I think it might be better to make a decision one by one.
Okay. Okay, but this allows us to make that decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want, I think a little bit of the history on this is that we've gotten people who we want to be on it that are, some of them are county employees, some of them are working with the friends of one of the lakes, I think friends of the Lake Monroe, that live just outside the county, and county employees who live outside the county who do have specialized knowledge for these things. So that's kind of the reason for the change.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh. Public comment. Sorry, sorry. I'm ready to just move forward here. Places to go, people, see, you know. Seeing no comment, call for a vote on modification of Resolution 2023-21. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Turner King.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has an item for our work session? Seeing none, we'll close the meeting and we will be back next week on August the 30th. Thank you, everyone.